Oh. This is one of our pets being prepped for surgery. She has bladder stones, which you can actually feel in there. So we're gonna get those out for her and make her feel better because that's, those are not supposed to be there.
It's like crunchy, but it's also like squishy. I don't know. Yeah, it's sand.
It's like a stress ball with rock.
Yeah.
Leah is our first apprentice here at Randhurst Animal Hospital. And the reason that we decided to go ahead with this program is because we thought it was a really great idea that the school district was doing to give students an opportunity to really kind of explore a potential profession, to see if it was something that they really wanted to do. And it also works to our benefit because we get to basically train them from the ground up.
Good girl, Leah.
Today was a special day because usually I don't get pulled into surgeries, but today I did and I got to see this 10-year-old dog. She's very little. She had about nine bladder stones that we managed to get out. So it was really cool getting to watch that in the surgery room.
In surgery, her role is really just to observe. She's not going to be doing anything, really participating in surgery, but it's nice for her to have the experience to be able to see what's going on.
This apprenticeship is really going well for me. Being able to do this apprenticeship while I'm still in high school rather than in college or just later on in life, it's a really good opportunity and it's something that helps me learn before I jump in and just it helps me get to know what I want to do. If you're thinking about doing the apprenticeship or you're on the edge, I would just say do it. It's a really good opportunity, you know? You don't get many of these and take it.
Hi, I'm Carson Coquelinas. I'm going to be a senior and I'm an intern here at the Chomber Boomers. This is a marketing internship set through District 214.
Chomber Boomers.
I'm in a micro internship. One of the cool parts about that is not going to be here for that long, so they're kind of giving me a taste of everything that goes on between like promotions or concessions or selling tickets. So they're kind of spreading me out everywhere and I get to see everything that goes on.
So I've worked in baseball for 18 years now and I've had many different intern classes throughout the years. We've almost exclusively been with college, you know, agent interns. I know our internship programs over the years have been the source of most of our full-time jobs. And this is my first experience with high school level interns and kind of that micro internship concept. And it's been, you know, so far, so good. It's been enjoyable to see people get their first taste within the business.
My parents and I both like wanted me to do an internship, so, and I knew that not a lot of high schoolers get the opportunity to like just see if they even like want to work where they think they're working. And it's just like a good way to know if you want to like continue the path that you're on or look into something else if you don't like it as much. This has been a really cool experience, learning about the business side of sports. And I really enjoy it and thanks for setting it up.
Hi, I am Martha Nava. I'm one of the three art teachers at Rolling Meadows High School. We spoke with the Rolling Meadows Park District earlier in the school year about potentially creating a mural here. We asked our art club students if they were interested in being involved in that and they were very excited. Many of them ride this bike path all the time and we're really thrilled. So what we strive to do with the design is to represent the park district and kind of all that it offers. We didn't want too many different colors, so they're kind of working within the palette of each season. So there's a little color harmony happening. That looks beautiful. For our students, it's certainly awesome to just the activity of doing this, be able to take a challenge, a design problem, and come up with a solution, a visual solution for that. And then what's really special is the icing on the cake that this is hopefully a very long-lasting tribute that they can point to and look at and say, you know, I was a part of that. I did that.
I love this one. This one is so cool.
My thing, one of my favorite parts was especially seeing the people that come through here, seeing really the community that actually uses this underpass.
Hi, kids.
Especially seeing like camp kids come through and they're all like, oh my gosh, looks so good. We're like, oh, they're so cute.
My favorite part is just spending time with friends and people who are as passionate about art that I am.
Today is just a very exciting day because we get to showcase the students and teachers who worked so hard on the Kirchhoff Underpass mural project. A lot of hard work went into this and a lot of hot days. And it's just unbelievable the amount of talent that this group has, if you haven't already seen it. I just want to say thank you to Martha and Kathy, who wasn't able to be here today, and the students who took the time to design, sketch, and paint this mural even as they hit their summer break. The Kirchhoff Underpass mural.
So this was a wonderful day. We just did the ribbon cutting and it was so exciting. How many people came out, not just from administration, from District 214 and the Rolling Meadows community? We had the mayor, parents, neighbors, and community members, and the artists themselves. It was awesome. It was really exciting. We're really proud and so are they.
Hi, my name's Ria. Today we're here at Northwest Community Hospital. I'm going into senior year of high school and I'm working as an apprentice.
Hi, Sue. I put the sit-to-stand lift, I put it in the therapy gym for you.
Northwest Community was very interested in working with District 214 with this apprenticeship program. I figured it would be a wonderful opportunity to bring a student onto the unit and expose them to what we do here in the hospital. It's a great learning opportunity for students here. Great experience right off the bat. And of course, the extra help in the hospital setting is certainly appreciated.
Hi, I'm gonna do your blood pressure. I'm on the rehab unit right now, so I learn a lot about stroke victims, brain injuries, things like that. And basically how to care and aid for patients who like have weakness or they have aphasia where they can't talk. I took the CNA class at Hershey, my high school. We did it at the school and I think it definitely helped me because the entire class was training on how to be a CNA slash PCT. So everything I learned, I, you know, I use all that education every day while here at my job.
Your pressure is 137 over 85.
One of my favorite things to do throughout the day is just talking to patients and making sure everything's in check. And if it's not, I'll help them get there and make sure everything's all right. Throughout being an apprentice and, you know, getting my CNA license and being a PCT here at the hospital, it definitely helped me realize that I want to pursue the medical field and I hopefully want a future in nursing.
Hi, I'm Nico and I have an internship at The Bakester. This is one of my favorites, the quiche. Normally when I come in for a day, I'll go to the back and I'll either start making cookies or like some kind of cookie bar, whatever it is that day. One of my jobs here is making cookies. I just got finished making these ones. These are chocolate chip cookies. Later in my adult life, I'm hoping that maybe I'll open a bakery or a bed and breakfast or something that just like kind of is really similar to this and having a lot of things that you're able to put together and like create something. And this is just a great experience on a lot of like different areas. It's like the business end and seeing how to manage it in reality. And then also just experience with baking things like in this quantity is something I've never done before, so it's been really interesting in both ways. I've really enjoyed just the feeling of like getting to bake a bunch of stuff and then seeing it actually be out and like being sold. And then it's actually being like put forward and you're like earning a profit for it is really just satisfying to me.
Thank you.
By having this internship, I feel like I'm like more confident that I would really enjoy working in a bakery or working in the food industry just because it's hard to imagine what the industry is like in reality. But then once you experience it firsthand, I think that it really will help you going forward to know what you want to do rather than committing to something and then realizing, oh, I don't like this later in life.
Today is orientation, so all the freshmen that are new to the school, we're just coming in here, getting settled, getting hyped.
I'm really excited to play sports and go to football games and go to activities.
Looking forward towards like making like a lot of new friends because like DG is like so much bigger.
It's nerve-wracking, but in a good way because, I mean, it's a bigger school, there's more people, which also means more new friends, just more opportunities overall.
Oh my gosh, this day is huge. I always get really nervous before this day and then when it's happening, it's just this beautiful scene coming out in front of you. So these kids are immediately welcomed. Basically, they are no stranger when they walk through these doors when school starts. They have already been embedded in our community.
I mean, almost everything, but I'm really looking forward to trying out for sports like football and baseball and then also like new classes.
I'm looking forward to the classes, like the law, all the sports I'm gonna do.
You know, every time a class comes there, there's so much potential. There's state champions, there's artists, there's musicians. And really that limitless potential and watching it kind of materialize over four years, man, that's really rewarding and hugely exciting.
Welcome back, everybody.
Hi, my name is Delica Grochek and I graduated from Buffalo Grove. I started as an intern in January of this year and I've been here ever since. I've just always been really interested in dermatology as my specialty and being here and seeing everything, it just kind of like really reiterated my passion for medicine and passion for surgery and dermatology. The way I started is I actually started at the front desk before I got all my clinical experience. And I just started by making appointments and interacting with patients on their way to checkout and kind of just seeing with copays and dealing a lot more with insurances and kind of getting a feel for the more bureaucratic side of it. Arlington Dermatology invested in me and tutored me and they trained me to do the nurse schedule here, which is light and laser treatments. And they've let me shadow a doctor or a surgeon and, you know, be in the rooms for that. And that's something that you're not going to find anywhere else. They really took a chance on me, you know, a girl right out of high school who's interested in medicine with not a lot of experience. I would definitely recommend doing an internship. I know that D214 has awesome programs, not only for medicine, but also for a lot of different areas. And I think it's just such an awesome opportunity, not only to make connections with patients and with people, but also to just for yourself to learn. And I definitely highly recommend it.
Today's a very special day. We are, for the first time, having a district bake-off. That's something that's never happened before, but I think it is a very cool opportunity to bring the culinarians together and to also add a little bit more pressure to making sure that their products come out correctly when you have some type of a competition added to it.
So the actual bread is very pretty?
Yeah. The teachers decided that we were going to do a quick sweet bread and then the savory yeast bread. I feel like it's very cool to have a district-wide support for family consumer sciences. And I know that doesn't happen in lots of different districts. And so I'm really grateful that they see the value of what we're doing and supporting it in this kind of a way.
This is outstanding.
Honestly, it's tough competition.
But the fact that these students have managed to complete their bread, got here on time, ended up making them good is accomplishment in itself. And then to be able to say that you've served a state senator, that you've served somebody who's been on Food Network, that you've served real restaurant owners is something that not many teenagers can have.
I like to bake. I'd actually won the Chicago Tribune Cookie Contest in 2016. And so this is always...
Hello, Tony. We're good. Ready to go?
Mm-hmm.
I'd like to call to adjourn the business meeting of August 25th for the District 214 Board of Education. Would you please call away?
Harmonon. Kreitzer, Posek, Palmer, Petrow.
President.
Rock.
Yes.
Walker. Dethron.
Here. Would you join us in the meeting, please? All right, collective leaders, certified by the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, and one God, and Elizabeth, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Yep, we can be settled there. Other can. Thank you. Okay, at 7:02, 7:01 actually, we're gonna open a public hearing on the 2022-2023 final budget. It's now open. This hearing provides an opportunity for the public to address the Board of Education regarding the final budget for the fiscal year. Dr. Schuler, can you provide a brief overview?
Yes, thank you very much, President Dusseling. Good evening. Once again this year, we are presenting a balanced operating budget to the Board of Education. I'd like to share a few thoughts and details regarding this year's proposed budget. From a student enrollment perspective, we remain very steady. This year we saw an increase of 17 students, which brings our enrollment to 11,949. Our insurance committee continues to do outstanding work. As a result, we're projecting an 8% increase in insurance costs this school year. We currently have 19 tax increment financing districts, or TIFs, in our school district boundaries. TIFs are designed to spur economic development, but they can shift the burden of property taxpayers to more heavily impact homeowners rather than businesses located within the TIF. We do have one TIF rolling off at the end of 2022, and that is the Prospect Heights TIF at Palatine Road. The proposed budget includes an increase in our certified teacher headcount by 9.7 FTE, or full-time equivalent, teachers. It was necessary to increase staffing in our buildings as a result of students being able to take more classes due to the blocked schedule. The budget includes funds for necessary maintenance and capital projects. It has been a longstanding priority of the Board of Education to not defer ongoing maintenance, and I want to ensure the Board and the community that this has been addressed in this budget proposal. Finally, this budget recognizes that when we recommend the tax levy for this year, we will be recommending abating $3.6 million back to property taxpayers this year, something of which we're very proud. I want to commend our finance team and Mike Vargas for working diligently to put together a balanced operating budget proposal that aligns with the Board-approved budget parameters. Thank you, Mr. President. Obviously, this is the opportunity for the time for the public to comment. We have two individuals that have signed up. And then later in the meeting during the action item, if there are any questions the Board has, I am happy to answer them as well.
Very good. And we have two people.
Correct, Ms. Bauer and Ms. Ostrom.
Okay. For those of you that are going to address us on the budget, please limit your comments to three minutes and direct your comments at this time to the topic of the 2022-2023 budget. There will be an opportunity to make general public comments later in the agenda. It's been a longstanding hallmark of the District 214 Board of Education. Every person appearing before the Board is treated with courtesy and respect. While it is a practice of the Board not to respond to public questions or comments during the meeting, Board members attentively listen to your comments and carefully consider the thoughts and topics you present. Although comments may be made on almost any matter related to the operation of schools, comments will be not allowed on concerning individual students or staff members. As a practice, the Board does not respond to public comments during the meeting. However, if written response is requested, they will be provided at a later time. Please make sure that Mrs. Keys has your address if you would like to have a response at a later time. Would you, first person, please, Ms. Bauer, would you please step up to the microphone and give us your name and address? And there you are.
All right, good evening. My name is Elizabeth Bauer. First of all, I'd like to thank you for your comments that you are making an effort to avoid deferred maintenance. Many of us are in school District 25 where we know that there was the recent bond issue, parts of which appeared to us to be rectifying deferred maintenance issues. So I'm glad to hear that's not an issue here. Second of all, you all know that I have been harping on the question of why financial education had been cut down to half a semester at Meadows. I've since learned that this was the case at multiple schools and that students even arrived in their classrooms two weeks ago and were surprised to be in a study hall. They didn't even know that they were only going to have half a semester of financial education. Now, since the school district is not legally obliged to answer questions unless the information exists in documents which can be found with the right-for-you search keywords and where the district does not claim an exemption, I was never given an answer, but I've now been told secondhand that the reason is exactly what I suspected. It's a cost-saving measure because it's cheaper to have kids in a study hall for half a semester than in an academic class for that entire time. Now, it might be entirely reasonable if the kids spent that second half of the semester making posters and budgets. I don't know, but nobody ever gave that answer. Now, obviously, this is not in the budget documents, but clearly there are decisions being made, choices about what to fund, what to cut, that we in the community have no line of sight into. I don't know if this is in the budget meeting documents that school board members have or if this is discussed amongst school board members outside of the board meetings or if the board members themselves don't know or even care about what kinds of decisions are made and how things are being prioritized, but there it is. Second, my son is in the marching band, so I took a close look at the music program expenditures. In order, they're listed, 1.6 million for music, $67,000 for marching band, $760,000 for orchestra, $35,000 for choir, another $253,000 for a line item labeled "Music Program." Now, surely this doesn't mean that orchestra gets 10 times as much money as marching band and other kinds of music get twice as much as orchestra, but this really indicates that nobody really cares about putting out a budget document that anybody can make sense of because they're just kind of slapped into categories. Last thing in that budget document is that Board Services takes up a sum of $465,000. That's kind of a lot of money and I'd kind of be interested in knowing how the Board can spend $465,000 without even being paid. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. The next person is Amy Austin.
So my name is Amy Ostrom. I am an alumni of Whaling High School and I'm very proud of that I moved my kids up here specifically so they could have an education that I felt privileged enough to have. I know you've heard that beginning multiple times. I've been here multiple times. And one of the previous times I actually spoke about was the intersection that crossing Hins Road is super dangerous. You guys have a huge budget. Can we actually just spend some money on the safety of the students getting to and from school? Also, the baseball players, when they're running across with their cleats on to shag balls, it's a hazard and it's an accident waiting to happen. The previous principal had said there were, there were things that were done. I talked about it with him sitting at a baseball game when my son was playing, when he first started. And then when I spoke about it at the meeting, he said, oh, no, we're working on it. Well, he's not here anymore. And so I want to make sure that you guys know that that's really dangerous and something needs to be done because I did not, it was last fall or last spring, a kid got hit on a bicycle when I was dropping my daughter off to school. Can we please do something about it?
Thank you. Thank you. As there are no others who wish to address the Board or sign up to address the Board regarding the budget at 7:10, it concludes the public hearing for the 2022-2023 final budget for Township High School District 214. The Board will be taking action on the final budget later in this meeting. Thank you very much. Okay, we are now at the point where we are going to approve, as for motion to approve minutes, for the July 21st, '22 opening and closing session meetings. For a special meeting August 10th, opening and closing meetings, could I have a motion please?
I shall move for approval.
A second. Just a moment.
Kreitzer.
Aye.
Harmonon.
Aye.
Petrow.
Aye.
Rock.
Aye.
Dethron.
I will approve for the 21st meeting, but abstain from the August 10th meeting. Mr. President, prior to public comments, could, after, Claire, we had, I made comments in my superintendent's report last time about the health and sex ed curriculum. Sure. And I'd like to just offer, we had some questions about clarifying, so I just want to make sure I clarify that for everybody. Go ahead. Public Act 102-0522 sets forth the definitions of and requirements for implementing a comprehensive sexual health education curriculum and a comprehensive personal health and safety education curriculum aligned with the national sex education standards. As permitted by that public act, School District 214 has not elected to implement such comprehensive sexual health or comprehensive personal health and safety education curriculum. Instead, the school district will continue to implement its existing health education curriculum as it has in the past school years. The school district's current curricula address the needs of our students and school community and are provided in accordance with the authority of the Board of Education to determine the curriculum provided to the school district students and other provisions of the school code and the State Board of Education regulation setting forth curricular requirements. Although Public Act 102-0522's provisions do not apply to our school district's sex education curriculum and health curriculum, our school district will voluntarily comply with the act's requirements regarding parent review of the scope and sequence of instructional materials and parental requests to opt their students out of instructional activities implementing the curriculum and instruction in health curriculum, in our health curriculum. Students who have been opted out of these topics by their parents will be given alternative educational activities. The school district has developed and posted on its website a form for the purposes of parents opting their students out of instruction in the aforementioned curricular content. So just to restate, D214 is not implementing the comprehensive sexual health or the comprehensive personal health and safety education curriculum as set forth in Public Act 102-0522. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for the clarification. Thank you very much. We are now at the place where we will have public comments and we have five people that have signed up for it. Four people have signed up for public comments. And the first person is Ira Mung, Mungus. And I will ask you to come up. I will read that before you speak, please. We believe in free speech in this Board and just to regard your comments from the community and our dealings and true unions. As a Board and District, we always try to keep you in the back with dignity and consideration. Members of the Board of Education are members of your communities. They are serving because they believe the district should provide the best possible education for every student and they believe they can assist, support, and work towards that belief. They volunteer their time. There is no salary provided for their service. Please offer comments regarding concerns about the district, but please try to present them in a fashion that provides dignity to the center and consideration of the Board members and district staff. The Board of Education asks each person to limit all their comments to three minutes regarding their topics of concern. However, if several people want to address the Board on similar topics, the Board President may limit the time to two minutes per person. Although comments may be made on almost any matter related to the operation of schools, comments will not be allowed identifying individual students or staff members. The Board of Education appreciates everyone that takes time to appear before the Board and treats all with courtesy and respect. The Board practices not to respond to public questions or comments at this time, however, we do listen carefully. If requested, a written response will be provided. Please make sure that you have provided your name and address to Ms. Keys and if you want a response. Now, to be fair and consistent, everyone addressing the Board, the same protocol and procedure will be in place for everyone. When the green light comes on, that indicates your time has started. The yellow light indicates 30 seconds remaining and the red light remaining indicates that your three minutes have expired. So please come forward and clearly state your name for the minutes. And if you wish a written response, please make sure Mrs. Keys answers. Thank you. And now we have Ms. Mungus.
Hi, my name is Maria Munoz-Votel. I am a parent of a junior at Prospect Heights who suffers from autism, clinical depression, and anxiety. I have entrusted my son to you and the Prospect High School. And the greatest desire I have ever had for my son is that he attend a school with a safe environment that nurtures his mind, his body, and his spirit. My son has endured traumas in his short 16 years of life. And when I speak of wanting safety for my son, what I mean is that I desire that he be respected in every aspect, psychologically, emotionally, spiritually, including his formation on sexuality, which, given the secular climate of our world today, our children are frequently bombarded by sexually explicit information that instead of fostering sexual health, hinders it. I was recently, I recently learned through a syllabus from my son's World Literature and Composition course that he would be introduced to a book titled "The Absolute Diary of a Part-Time Indian" by Alexi Sherman. I'd like to read to you an excerpt of the chapter. Chapter four talks about how the main character has a love of naked girls and angels. And I quote, "I spent hours..." And I quote, "I spend hours in the bathroom with a magazine that has 1,000 pictures of naked movie stars." Yep, that's right. "I admit that I masturbate. I'm proud of it. I'm good at it. I'm a ambidextrous. If there were a professional masturbator's league, I'd get drafted number one and make millions of dollars." And maybe you're thinking, "Well, you shouldn't really be talking about masturbation in public." Well, tough. I'm gonna talk about it, because everybody does it and everybody likes it. And if God hadn't wanted us to masturbate, then God wouldn't have given us thumbs. So I thank God for my thumbs. On page 89, there is a reference to bestiality. The main character jokingly says, "Hey, chief," Roger said, "you wanna hear a joke?" "Sure, I said. Did you know that Indians are living proof..." ...of buffalo? On page 127, it reads, "Really good books and cartoons give you a boner." I was shocked. You should get a boner. You have to get a boner. I just want to say that I don't see the benefit or appropriateness of gratuitous and vulgar sexual language or sexually explicit references in books or in a course designed to teach about world literature, cultures, and tradition. The teacher of this course expected me to sign a vague syllabus approving this and other books for my son. The syllabus was not transparent, nor informed me about how some books would be rated R. I am now on the defense. I'm afraid that some teachers do not have my child's best interests at hand. And there... Aren't there not any other books that highlight themes of unity, resilience, perseverance, in the face of challenges without objectifying men and women as sexual objects? There are better books out there, and I expect better literary resources from the district than we entrust our children to.
Thank you. Thank you.
First of all, I'd like to thank you for your clarifying statement on the sexual education program. There's a lot of reporting out there that suggests that any school that teaches any form of sex ed requires that they adopt these standards. I'm not quite sure how you weasel out of it, but it looks like everybody's recognized that this is not appropriate for the community. However, there are nonetheless things that we're seeing going on in the district that are calling into question what is happening. In the equity audit, one of the students said, "My school brought in a teacher, a speaker, on gender identity." Another student lamented that even though the teachers were asking for their students' pronouns at the beginning of the year, they weren't asking for them often enough to accommodate students whose gender changed frequently throughout the year. What's more, you have said that you use online resources, and your FOIA officer has refused to share what these resources are. These are not anything that you are willing to post on your website. You can understand that there are a lot of videos out there that say things like, "You can decide if you are ready as a teenager to have sex by whether you feel really good about your relationship and have discussed contraception, or whether you're a boy or a girl, or both or neither depends only on how you think of yourself." And I've also again learned today that the state law that mandates that you provide information on the program that you have, that you have declared again, that merely by making a statement that you have a given health textbook and that you use resources online you deem to be enough, and your FOIA officer said that parents are obliged to take up any further inquiries with their student's teacher, which again means that you render parents powerless and dependent solely on the question of do they opt in or out, effectively denying them a chance to have a discussion about what appropriate resources are and leading or resulting in parents being obliged to take their kid out of the program entirely if they can't get a satisfactory explanation or have the ability to have a reasonable conversation about what is and isn't appropriate.
Do you have the motion?
Good evening. Elizabeth may have covered some of this information, but according to NSCS, you are required to post the sex ed curriculum to the website, but the only thing posted to the website is just a mere statement that the district uses Glencoe Learning, and there's zero curriculum information there. Parents who are here tonight, ask yourselves why it is so difficult to obtain curriculum from this district? If this sex ed program is so fabulous, then why aren't you willingly allowing parents to see this information and the materials? Are the materials used at the GONCO program the old-fashioned birds and bees, or is it the AMAZ videos that preach having sex when you are ready and you know you are ready to have sex when you have a good relationship and he or she is a good person? The textbook, the materials should be available in all schools or the local libraries for parents to be able to access and see. Since Dr. Schuler has stated that the district is not participating, I'm curious about a few other things, though. When I pull up the Glencoe link, there is a statement there that indicates that their materials are in keeping with the NSCS standards. So what does that mean? You can technically say that you're not changing the curriculum and you're using the same curriculum, because they changed it, not the district. It's a question. So I have a few questions for the Board members, and I would actually like responses individually from each of you. One of them, well, here's what I'm asking. I'd like to know the exact date of the most recent time that you reviewed the Glencoe curriculum? And are you aware of what the full curriculum from Glencoe is and includes with all supporting materials exactly as implemented by D214 schools? Were the current NSCS standards included and/or updated at the time of your review of the curriculum and supplemental materials? How much time did you each spend on familiarizing yourself with the current curriculum? Upon full review of the materials, assuming that happened, would you want your high school-aged children to be taught this in high school, assuming, you know, going back in time from some of you? You know, would you want your high school students to be taught this same material? That's it. Thank you.
Next person is Lisa Edwards.
Lisa Edwards. The Board's agenda continues to be glaring. It's transparent to us that you do not want to work with parents or have their support, only their money. When FOIA's are only getting a response or referring to the district website, which has no details, no one answers are given to constituents' questions without the correct question. When constituents ask for curriculum, they are asking for details, not a few headings. To say you cannot produce what they want is a lie. Any curriculum a district adopts is unpacked by the district and/or staff. You continue to prove you are not listening or taking into account what your constituents are asking for. So just as a reminder, the Board was elected to work for the community, not someone who is making close to a half a million dollars a year. You are volunteers, and you may voluntarily resign at any time when not adhering to your oath.
Okay, we will now vote a superintendent's report.
Thank you, Mr. President. The district responded to the following Freedom of Information Act request consistent with school code. G. Love from Greg Limo LLC requested transportation bid information. A. Merblock, Positive Connections Transportation Services, requested transportation bid information. M. Edwardson requested copies of communications. And E. Wojcik requested curricular and policy information. We have had an outstanding start to the school year, and I'd like to thank our students, parents, and staff for their hard work. It has been awesome to walk the buildings and see the incredible school cultures and an environment for positive instructional outcomes for our students. I'm sure that you have all seen that across the country we are experiencing a significant teacher and support staff shortage. We were able to fill all of our vacant teaching positions for the start of the school year, but we do have a number of classified positions that are still available. If anybody watching tonight is interested in applying for jobs at the district, I would encourage you to visit the Human Resources page of our website or call our Human Resources department during work hours. The other challenge our contracted transportation companies have is that they could use additional school bus drivers. If anyone's interested in driving school buses, please contact the district office, and we'll provide you with the contact information for our transportation contractors. Included in the Board's packet was our quarterly update from our Food and Nutrition Services Department. With a positive fund balance in 2022, we were able to invest in our program and update both equipment and our cafeteria designs. Feel really great about how the cafeterias look. And as a reminder to the community, we are no longer participating in the National School Lunch Program, which allows the district greater flexibility in the variety of foods we can serve and the portion size of those foods. We are remaining in the USDA Special Milk Program. We'll continue to keep the Board and community updated on our Food and Nutrition Services Program through these quarterly updates. As you know, the Board approved our Learning Renewal Plan last summer. The renewal plan was reviewed after first semester of last year, and we continue to fund those activities that were being effective and made changes as necessary. Tonight, we are providing another update on how we ended the last school year and what we are including in this school year's Learning Renewal Plan. We will bring this back to the Board in January to continue to update the Board and the school community. I'll turn the microphone over to Dr. Lizaro Lopez, Associate Superintendent for Teaching and Learning, and Jeffrey Smith, District's Director of Research and Evaluation, to present this evening's update. ...school year. The district's Learning Renewal Plan reflected the recommended priorities identified by the State of Illinois P-20 Council listed there on the screen. We find references to each of these strategies embedded in the plan. There were seven major components of the plan selected here, which have not changed. The presentation will provide the Board with the updated results. So we begin with the updated... With expanded access to support during the regular school day. The goal of this focus area is to balance social, emotional health with academic progress by guaranteeing access to study hall lunch and support resources for all students.
Just as a quick preface before I go to the next page, we're going to be seeing throughout this presentation a few different charts and graphs. Throughout all these, we give sort of an apples-to-apples comparison. We're showing 2019 school year data, so that's 2018-19, and you'll see those as the blue charts. And the red bars will be the most recent year, the 2021-2022 school year. So as we... As Laura's talked about, the different kinds of support coursework that we've been able to offer, the implementation of the block schedule and removal of lunches a period has allowed for a much broader participation of students in these kind of supporting coursework, like guided study halls, tutoring, free learning periods, et cetera. Participation in this supporting program's increased from 55% in 2019 to 83% in 2022, an increase of almost 37 percentage points. The increased opportunities to access support services and interventions, though, did not adversely affect the four-credit course participation. At the same time, students have had more opportunities for credit electives with a 15 percentage point increase from 63.5% to 78.9% over that same time period. We've been able to see, so we really feel like this has shown fruit in the pass rates as we've seen students continue to recover and even to accelerate. This support courses have had an impact. The overall pass rates in 2019 were 96.2, and while pass rates fell significantly during COVID, we are now seeing a substantial recovery approaching pre-COVID grades, with pass rates at near 95%. Students in some of our most vulnerable populations are also recovering, with low-income students passing at a 90.6% of their classes, IEP students passing 91.6%, EL students passing 88.3%, and duly identified EL/IEP students passing at 89% of all of their coursework.
So plans for our school 2023 school year include investments in education support staff, access to tutoring, increased elective opportunities, as we referenced earlier, and because over 90% of our students actually have a study hall, we can make an embedded no-cost SAT prep available to juniors and seniors during that time. And we hope to implement that or we plan to implement that for the spring. Resources in the community are limited, resulting in significant demand for mental health services in our schools. So as a result, we have invested significant resources from the Learning Renewal Plan in this area of focus. Expanded mental health supports guide and nurture students and staff to process trauma, restore their equilibrium within the school community, and participate fully in teaching and learning. So students and teachers experienced unprecedented disruptions to normal patterns of interaction, and many have had to cope with them, certainly in substantial hardship. Funding for increased student services, staffing, expanded access to individual group counseling, personal home visits to meet with students and parents, as well as facilitating referrals to community resources. The plans for the '23 school year include support for additional interns and counselors as well as increased staffing in our health offices.
Improving student well-being relies a lot upon different measures of mental health, including our students' engagement, and those can be seen in one way through our co-curricular participation. Many activities and opportunities, we know, were suspended during COVID, when we couldn't be very close together, obviously, and many of these activities were unable to be held. But during the last year, we've worked diligently to expand access and to improve tracking. Prior to COVID in 2019, approximately 56.1% of our students participated in at least one activity, and in 2022, 52.5% of the students were engaged.
So for the '23 school year, the Learning Renewal Plan will fund additional non-traditional co-credit activities such as hip hop yoga and other creative ideas brought forward by students and staff. We've had a strong start to the school year, so our teams are collecting data from this fall and developing targeted goals by class.
Behavior events are another measure of our students' well-being. Overall, there's been a 9% reduction from 2019 to 2022 of the number of students who cited who have at least one behavioral behavior incident. More than two-thirds of these behavior incidents are related to attendance issues, disruptive behavior, defiance, or other minor incidents like no ID, parking violations, et cetera. In fact, 78% of our students in 2022 had no behavior incidents of any kind. In fact, if we look not just at the students, but we look at the total number of incidents, we saw a reduction from 2019 to 2022 of over half the number of incidents.
So the Learning Renewal Plan funds additional staffing to provide expanded opportunities for individual group counseling, developing and delivering instruction on self-regulation strategies, and increased staffing and increased campus supervision.
And the increased campus supervision is for providing more adults in areas where we have more kids. Remember last year, we allowed students, when they weren't in a class, not to be on campus. This year, we're going back to where we used to have all the freshmen on campus, and then in some buildings, sophomores and less than are privileges. So we just have more spaces that we need adults to be in as they are there for lunch and maybe headed learning time.
As we saw earlier, many on the prior slides, many of the tracked behavior incidents are related to attendance issues. And so while 78% of students had no behavior incidents of any kind, if we exclude the attendance issues, which are not strictly behavioral issue in the same way, over 87% of our students had no behavioral issues at all in 2022. But we do know that attendance is a continuing challenge. Every missed class is a loss of a learning opportunity, and data shows a strong correlation between attendance and grades. In school year 2019, 85.8% of courses had an attendance rate above our 90% benchmark, while that rate was 74% in 2022.
So for the upcoming school year, attendance interventions are being funded in all of our schools, and our family outreach specialist funded in the plan will focus on chronic absenteeism. This is certainly a priority for the staff to address. Yes?
What's defined as chronic absenteeism?
That's a good question. I think it's anything over 10?
I think...
Fifteen days?
When I did do reports, it was 15 days. I don't know if it's changed.
It's 10 for us.
Yeah. I know it's 15 is considered truant, 15 consecutive days, but I think anything 10 days or more is considered chronic.
The district switched its focus when truant became chronic.
So while the district annually supports some of our opportunities for students in need of reading and math support, the Learning Renewal Program provided increased funds for the program, both in 2022 and will so for 2023. And Tony, we lose? It's not working on this, sorry. These funds support an expanded number of invitations, waived fees for both free and reduced lunch students, increased staffing and funding for significantly increased transportation costs. And so while we're not providing a summer school report this evening, I wanted to mention embedded in this summer bridge program is access to career pathway exploration, as well as on-the-job work-based learning experiences for our students. Funds from the learning renewal plan support transportation and teachers for these programs. The learning renewal plan funds allow us to cohort students not on track for graduation and provide accelerated acquisition of credits alongside intensive case management support. So some of the members of the board have been able to visit one, such as this, the SOAR program at Buffalo Grove High School, as one of the programs that we funded.
So we've seen a significant number of delivery of these four-credit, or these credit recovery courses following the learning losses of COVID. In the 2020 regular school year, seniors completed 680 credit recovery courses, the 784 courses completed by all the students during the regular academic year. And then this summer, we had another 738 completions, so over 1,500 completions over the entire year.
Jeffrey, you said 2020, you meant 2022.
22. So we continue to fund staffing for in-school credit recovery programs such as SOAR and Focus on Math and English Support in this year's plan, and we are waiving fees for the young adult program serving students needing to recover credit that participated in that evening program. And so some of the most impacted academically during COVID included our English language learners, students with disabilities, and students of poverty. There were a variety of interventions implemented to support student recovery as part of the plan. So board members, you'll find the newsletter from our specialized schools program in your materials. District-wide, we had 212 students that participated in Jobs for America's Graduates in the 2122 school year. Jobs for America's Graduates serves students who have multiple at-risk factors, including not on track for graduation, behavioral concerns, no post-secondary plans, home life factors such as foster care and homelessness. And while the program at our comprehensive schools is only about a year old, JAG's 40-year history in 40 states reflects a 96% graduation rate, 78% post-secondary rate, and 65% with full-time employment. So District 214 students in JAG receive 12 months of post-graduation follow-up and services on-the-job and/or enrollment in the post-secondary institution. And while the national data for the program is strong, there are two recent success stories from our program that include JAG students from the academy. So one student was told that she would never graduate high school. She is now finishing her first year at National Lyus University with straight A's. Another academy student who participated in the program is now working full-time with benefits in a nursing home. She's studying to become a CNA. Both of these students credit JAG with their success outside of high school. Our plans for the upcoming school year will be continued funding for the program at four of our school sites and to collect more data on the program. So during the 2122 school year, we recruited and trained 32 education support staff as tutors, providing regular tutoring to, regular weekly tutoring to 1,651 students with an identified risk factor. In the upcoming year, we have academic resource centers at all our comprehensive high schools with funding for dedicated certified and support staff to provide on-demand and high-dose tutoring opportunities.
As Loz mentioned, many of these students are facing some of the most, the largest challenges of any of our students in our buildings. And so by putting them in some of these highly intensive interventions, we are helping support them in their success. You can see from the data here that many of these students are, you know, we had 85% of our JAG students pass, or the course pass rate for our JAG students was 85%, and for those in the high-dose tutoring was 83.3%. On the next slide, you can see that the average GPA for the JAG students was about 2.53, and the high-dose tutoring was 2.43. So these students who are at the most risk are, on average, getting a higher than a C average.
In the final category here, while the board supports the talent development program, each year we provide students a number of opportunities to engage in enrichment courses. Funding from the learning renewal plan allowed us to waive fees for all freshmen. In the plans for this school year, funding has been allocated to waive program fees for all students during the next enrichment programming cycle. And our hope would be this would encourage more students to take advantage of these unique experiences. So it's been, as they've said, a positive start to the school year, and we're very excited to provide these support to our students, all of them. And we will be happy to answer any questions you may have, and no, we'll have a mid-year update to be provided in January. Thank you.
Board members, any questions? Ms. Benson?
So I remember when you presented the JAG program, and I remember I asked you about it, why didn't we do this before? And your answer was, because Illinois didn't have it.
Oh, that's right. We were one of the first schools to adopt the program.
Right. It was in the 80s, I think. Yeah, and it finally came here and obviously resulted. So for the benefit of the eyes, do you want to talk about the criteria for students to be in the JAG program?
Yeah, so I listed some of them, but these are students that have really not one respect, but multiple respect factors. So usually, they might be a student of poverty. They may be experiencing, end up being in an unstable home environment, where they might be in and out of foster care, homeless, or having to move between family members to provide support for them. These are students that, when we speak to them, they have no plans for post-secondary. They may not even feel like they have a future or a potential for a future. So what these staff members are trained to do is to work individually with each of these students and provide the curriculum. There's a summary there, and I can certainly get the board a lot more specifics, but they certainly do, they identify tracks, they do goal setting, they help them fill out job applications, they take them to interviews, they connect them with local employers, they help them go visit schools, they do everything you can get, you can think of. And we've targeted all juniors and seniors to ensure that they have a future. And then what I'm most excited about the program is the fact that they do something that we're not able to do, is they stay with students for a year after they've graduated to check in, to see what supports they need, to help them ensure that their transition is in place.
So the funds for this came from, what was the name of the act? I'm sorry, the federal government.
Yeah, so the Esther Fund.
Yes, thank you. And that was funding for three years?
Yes. So, well, they've allocated resources to school districts across the country, and we were required to develop a three-year plan for the funds. I think since then, they've extended the timeline to be able to spend all the funds, but we developed a three-year plan that we're working through right now that you have in front of you.
Okay, well, it sounds pretty successful. It sounds like something, I know we have to decide later on, but it sounds like something that we might keep, I hope.
We've identified, we have identified other grants to provide support. And in most states, there is some state funding that helps support the program, usually through Department of Commerce. It is a workforce-focused program, so I'm certainly hopeful. The strength of the program is in the staff that are hired to deliver it. So you need a special kind of teacher, an individual to work with students to help. We use students a lot.
So the credit recovery program, you talked about the successes. What about the students that didn't complete on credit recovery?
Yeah, so I would say the rate was about 81% of the students of the courses attempted were actually achieved. Now, what I will say is, is that I don't have the number right in front of me, but at least the seniors were able to achieve enough credits, and our graduation rates weren't impacted this last year. We were as successful as we are with helping students meet all the graduation requirements. Students that tended not to be successful might have been freshman, sophomore, junior year. They may not have been as motivated. It does require a lot of work independently, even though we have staff that specifically were assigned. But we certainly experienced lots of success. But you figure these are students that may have been disengaged and disconnected, and even at 80% success rate is certainly strong. And we have identified them and are continuing to support that program this year.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Johnson.
Yeah, the comments.
I have a question.
First of all, it does appear that there is positive movement on the renewal plan. As Board Member Kreutzer had asked about the funding and everything, and we have a three-year plan. Obviously, we had allocated so much for the first year and then potentially spending for the second year. How did you evaluate the funding going forward? For instance, talking about the credit recovery, we're not anticipating as many students as I would expect that will need that credit recovery. I mean, you're in the, there might be some question, or now sophomores or juniors, and how have you allocated? And how did you go about the assignment?
Our original design, and Dave can pitch in here, but our original design really was about a 20% to 30% drop each year, year-to-year over the budget allocation. Because we assumed that most of the interventions or the most intense interventions were in year one after we returned, less year two, and even less year three, from the experiences of students entering the school system. For this year, we had a data workshop with all of the school leaders across our district, where they did a deep dive on all the data about programs and the decisions about where they can best utilize and gain their resources. We established a budget that was based on both student enrollment and the average population that is in school for them to determine how they can best allocate and support their programs.
And obviously, all students benefited from these funds, everything from the development of block programming universally throughout the schools and the additional staffing and programs that were sponsored.
Thank you. Thanks.
Ms. Petro? Thank you very much. We're going to have our next learning plan, renewal plan, what year is it?
January. So whenever we have semester one data, so that we can take a look and see where we're at after the first semester.
Makes sense. Thank you very much. Fortunately, those funds were very good. How much were those?
For our district, for the learning renewal plan, there's $6 million allocated over three years.
Does that come directly to us, or does that go through the state board and education?
Go ahead. It goes right to us. They don't take the rent off. That's allocated.
So that's good news.
Correct.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. A board member. Oh, finally, I'm sorry. Finally, we'd like to show a spotlight story, just as we run our first days of school.
Here we go. Three, two, one.
Today is orientation, so all the freshmen that are new to the school, we're coming in here, getting settled, getting hyped.
I'm really excited to play sports and go to football games and go to activities.
Way more of sports than like making like a lot of friends, because like D G is like so much bigger.
It's nerve-wracking, but in a good way, because, I mean, it's a big school. There's more people. It also means more new friends. There's more opportunities overall.
Oh my gosh, this day is huge. I always get really nervous before this day, and then when it's happening, it's just this beautiful scene coming out in front of you. So these kids are immediately welcomed. Basically, they are no stranger when they walk through these doors of Full Starks. They've already been embedded in our community.
I mean, almost everything, but I'm really looking forward to try out for sports like football, baseball, and then also like new classes.
Well, I'm looking forward to the classes, like the law, all the sports I'm gonna do.
You know, every time a class comes, there is so much potential. There are state champions, there are artists, there are musicians. And really, that limitless potential of watching it kind of materialize over four years, man, that's really rewarding and hugely exciting.
Welcome back, everybody!
Amazing.
Thank you. That concludes our board's.
Very good. Thank you. Board member updates. Who wants to start? Mr. Heinman? Hershey's Automotive Program sold a car recently. We always love talking about how our students get real work experience. Students at Hershey's Automotive Program built a 1997 Toyota 4Runner. It recently went to auction and sold for $26,000. Hershey is one of five high schools in the nation that participated in the Specialty Equipment Market Association, SEMA, Vehicle Build Program. In all, five cars were sold for nearly $150,000. It will benefit automotive youth engagement that should initiate this through SEMA. Last week, Board Member Kreutzer and I attended the village board meeting at the Village of Mount Prospect as part of their "School's Open Safety Week." This proclamation focused on motorists to be safe with the students that are walking, biking, and busing to schools. Next, Ms. Kreutzer?
Sure. Here's the Oasis Summer Camp recap. The summer camp at Oasis Memorial Park wrapped up last month. I hope high school students like the program and help elementary school kids to read, explore STEM, and play sports. This year, they even spent a week at a community center in Bellwood to help them create the program there. You can find the full story on District 214. Great work to all the teachers and volunteers in the program. And there was a nice article in the Daily Herald today about this. And I was thinking, maybe we can ask Mr. Castro to bring a couple of the students, because these are our educator prep students, aren't they? Yeah, and to talk about their experience over there. That's it.
Thank you. Ms. Petro? Ms. Rauk?
Thank you. First of all, it is exciting to watch all of the staff, the educators, back at school, seeing all the positivity. It's really super exciting to have an opportunity to see some of the schools. So that video really, the enthusiasm, the support, it is great. This Saturday, there is going to be a district-wide clothing drive, thanks to Samantha Springer. It's our first district-wide clothing drive. For the last two weeks, all the schools have been accepting donations. So this Saturday, I believe it's the 27th, I was just looking at the calendar here, there will be a free garage sale where families can come in and grab the items that fit their needs. Everyone is welcome to the Willing High School from noon to 3:00. Again, Samantha Springer came up with this great idea, and it's good for our students, and thank you for taking the initiative for our community.
Thank you. Mr. Heinman and Ms. Kreutzer, thank you for attending that meeting. I do have the proclamation here in front of me that, yeah, you're going to. Good. So if anybody wants to see it, there it is. And for the opening of school, if you go to hashtag 214 first days on social media, you'll see a number of things that have taken place at the schools. Matter of fact, at Elk Grove High School, Fox 32 was even there on the first day. So it's great to see everybody back after the whole COVID thing. Amazing. Thank you, board members, for your comments and participation. Okay, we're now into consent items, and there's a number of consent items. 8.1, 8.2, 8.3, 8.1 is approval of compail, 8.2 is approval of personal transaction report, disposal clause session audio, approval of board expenses, approval of treasury services, approval of school calendar, approval of honoring naming in Prospect Placeville Bandroom. Could I please have motion for a consent vote? All right. Could I have for 8.1 through 8.7, please?
Move for approval.
Second. Please, no more.
Kreutzer? Aye. Heinman?
Aye.
Petro?
Aye.
Rauk?
Aye.
Desley?
Yes. Ms. Petro, could you please make motion on 8.8?
I move to approve 8.8.
It's not good.
Please.
Okay, maybe you can explain what this is. I heard about this in the foundation meeting that discussed this issue. Public really doesn't know anything about it.
Yeah, so we have a board policy regarding naming of facilities and honoring naming of facilities for individuals that have displayed exemplary contributions to the school or school district over the course of their experience, their life, and who have been retired or left the district for a minimum of five years. And so it came from Prospect High School, a recommendation to name the band room after Dave Morrison, a longtime band teacher and highly acclaimed band teacher and a great mentor to thousands and thousands of students over his career. And they brought it to the committee, and the committee that we have set up per board policy recommended approval to bring it to the board for consideration. So the administration is supportive of this request, as is the committee charged with reviewing the naming of facilities. So we recommend it.
And way back then, he was Teacher of the Year.
He was Teacher of the Year, yes.
I found it interesting that each school can do this, but only once every seven years.
Correct.
Obviously, this particular teacher has left a great impact with the community. Everybody, the foundation for them, what it was and what it did has its own special importance.
I think any of us whose lives were impacted by Dave would be supportive of this request, for sure.
He started the Knights of Champions March Event, which was transferred with the year. I'm not sure if he wasn't the one who wrote the song for Prospect High School.
I think he was.
But he's an amazing guy. He comes back periodically to be a guest conductor. And all of his, all of his, he's the greatest gentleman, and has the nicest words to say about the students. Really, really true of him. Any rate, please, board member.
Petro?
Aye.
Kreutzer?
Aye.
Hyman?
Aye.
Rauch?
Aye.
Desley?
Yes. Next, we'll go to a discussion item, district vision, mission, and goals.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President. Recently, the Illinois State Board of Education modified their Paladin Career Readiness Indicators from an accountability perspective. And so to align with their new accountability measures, we're recommending a change in our instructional goals to align directly with the state expectation. So where you see number one listed as instructional goals, the proposal will be to reflect what is expected of us by the Illinois State Board of Education. That's the only change being recommended.
What was that change?
The change was, if you remember, for the career readiness indicators, there used to be two readiness indicators. And now, in addition to identifying a career cluster area, they have to hit three of the readiness indicators. There's been an expansion of those readiness indicators, including consecutive summer employment during high school career, completion of a program of study, and attaining and maintaining consistent employment for a minimum of 12 months during high school, are some of the additions.
Good, thank you. Well, there's any comments? Who would say that next name?
Next name for action, yes.
Okay, now we're at the point where we will, I'm looking for a motion to approve the 2023, 2022, 2023 budget.
Isn't the public allowed to comment on discussion items?
Yes, if you want to.
Great.
The three hundred rules in effect and this everything I referred to is in effect also.
All right. First of all, just a quick comment on the teaching and learning update. It would be really helpful if staff would have some reflection about things that did not go well, rather than simply tucking up what their successes were. They combined tardies with all other incidents of misbehavior, in reality, fights, and disruptive behavior substantially, and they have massage videos to hide that. With respect to the mission, vision, and goals, I'll point out the fact that the District 214 Vision for the Board of Education includes that they would involve school and community members in decision-making processes. I suggest you get rid of this, because I have not seen any educator that this is actually a goal that you have. Certainly during COVID, it was very clear to everybody that parents, community members had no role in your agenda. Second, there are two instructional goals. The first is the one that you referenced. The second is, as measured by the growth from PSAT to SAT, the percent of students meeting or exceeding national growth norms from PSAT to SAT will increase annually or will exceed a threshold established by the board after few years of data are collected and analyzed. This goal has been there since August 26, 2016. If you do the math, that's six years ago, which by my math says that four years ago, you all should have come up with a threshold and started evaluating the schools based on these thresholds. I am not seeing any of that, so I encourage you to actually do the things that you're promising that you're going to do.
Okay, I'm ready for it. Somebody else would like to come in?
Well, going back to the power point, comparing this two school years is not apples to apples. As for the 218, 219, that was prior to the ASR funds.
And we're discussing the Board of Education goals at this point.
No comments are available, I have a question.
Okay, good.
Anything thereafter is when districts have more money to spend for the district to support students, especially if the free categories discuss. As for Jack supporting these students, it's just a reminder that the district is not supporting these students through best practices with the core curriculum. So I want to know what your definition is apples to apples?
There are a couple other comments. Okay, now we're at the roll call action item. Approval of the 2022, 2023 budget?
I have a motion. I have a motion, my Kreutzer, in a second.
Second? Second. Board member comments? Ms. Rauch? Ms. Petro?
And just to make sure, people know, this was presented as a preliminary budget. There was a presentation done. I provide the overview during the public hearing. I just want to make sure people know that there was time for board members to ask questions and to receive more information.
And that was originally posted in July.
In July, correct. Correct.
Dan, the department comments? Please, board member.
Kreutzer?
Aye.
Hyman?
Aye.
Petro?
Aye.
Rauch?
Aye.
And Desley?
Yes. I'm seeking a motion to go on a closed session for the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of visiting employees under the public body in compliance with five ILCS 120/2. Parenthesis C, parentheses one amended by PA 101-459, and replacement of individual students in special education programs and other matters relating to individual students under five ILCS 120/2, parentheses C. Immediately following the closed session, Board of Education will convene an open session and may take action if necessary as a result of closed session discussion items. Could I please have a roll call? I'm sorry, can I have a motion to go on a closed session?
So. It's not good.
Thank you. Another roll call, please.
Kreutzer?
Aye.
Hyman?
Aye.
Petro?
Aye.
Rauch?
Aye.
And Desley?
Yes. We anticipate a closed session lasting around 15 minutes, and we do anticipate action coming out.
Okay.